I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, July 20, 2023, to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Clerk Sol, will you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Marcheska.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also President Clerk Sol.
Thank you. First up tonight is the President's Report. We are very fortunate to have Representative Abdel-Nasheer Rashid give us a legislative update. Assalamu alaikah, Representative Rashid.
Good evening, everyone. Let me get this. There you go. Can you hear me fine? Thank you so much, Mayor, trustees, for having me today. For those who don't know me, my name is Abdel-Nasheer Rashid. I'm the state representative for the 21st district, which includes parts of Riverside, and it's truly a privilege and an honor to be here, to be with you today. Before I jump into some of the updates on what we accomplished during the legislative session in Springfield and tell you a little bit about the budget and some things pertaining to Riverside, I want to read you a quick statement with regard to the situation that Ms. Ramos finds herself in. I stand with Ms. Ramos and the Village of Riverside in calling on the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board to reverse its decision to decertify her. The charges against her were dismissed and vacated. She worked hard to turn her life around, to support her family, and to serve her community. I hope that the Illinois ETSB promptly reviews its decision and that the state's attorney's office removes her name from the do not call list. This is simply the right thing to do. Very sorry that she has to go through this, and thank you all for fighting for her. I also want to share that my intern from Riverside, Aiden Joyce, is with us today. He's been a wonderful addition to the team. We're very lucky to have him for the summer. Thank you, Aiden. I was sworn in on January 11 of this year, and as you know, legislative session is January through May. We do all of the state's business before the May 31 deadline, and I want to share some of the updates, some of the key things that we were able to accomplish. We increased on the budget side. We increased investment in early childhood education, K through 12, and community colleges and universities, including continuing to make the payment into the evidence-based funding formula for public schools, which I know for District 208 has brought it up to 73% adequacy so far. We're not where we should be yet, but we're getting there. The increased investment in education is helping to bring many of our school districts into a much better situation, and I've met with superintendents and principals and many others, and I've heard consistently that EBF is working. People are very happy, and Aiden has helped significantly with this project. People are, education leaders and administrators have said, keep doing EBF, keep investing so that we can increase the levels of adequacy. In one school in, one school district in Berwyn, pre-EBF, they were at 46% adequacy. They are now at 71% adequacy. So while we have ways to go, we have absolutely more work to do. I am proud of our continued investment in education. We've also improved access to healthcare, invested in homelessness prevention, and strengthened Illinois' financial standing by paying down debt, increasing pension payments, and shoring up the Rainy Day Fund. And I do want to say, I did fight for increasing the local government distribution fund, which went up, not as much as I'd like for it to go up. We're going to keep fighting for more, but it did go up for the first time in a very long time. We passed legislation to hold gun manufacturers accountable and to keep guns out of the hands of domestic abusers, and an ethics bill that bans political contributions from red light camera companies and preventing revolving doors. We cracked down on generic price gouging and on the property tax front, closed loopholes and the property tax code that creates a destructive cycle of vacancy and abandonment. Zooming in a little bit on Riverside, there had been previously a commitment for the Riverside Swan Pond Trail Project that we worked to release the funds for, $350,000, and I secured at least another $150,000 for Riverside for capital improvements, which I hope can help toward lead pipe replacement, other key priorities that you all decide to spend the money on, and I will keep fighting for that. I have talked to the mayor and others extensively about the need to provide funding for lead pipe replacement. I know it's a big cost and that Riverside has had challenges accessing some of the funding due to the eligibility criteria that the federal government imposed in the infrastructure project. So I will continue being a partner with you to find solutions on that issue. And I just want to say, my office is in Berwyn, very close to here, on 6901 West Sirmac, just a couple blocks east of Sirmac and Harlem, and we are doing many events and coffee, doing coffee with the rep in Riverside coming up, and we'll be doing a tour of the Riverside Public Library soon. You know, reach out to us if there's anything we can do to help, whether it's the village board or the residents of Riverside. My office is accessible to you. We'd love to be a partner to help make sure that we improve the lives of folks from the village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Representative Rashid? Hearing none. I really appreciate everything you've done. I sent Representative Rashid a letter or an email, and he called me from the West Bank. That's, you know, he was engaged, and even when he's on vacation, and literally under fire, called and made sure that our needs are met. So we really appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second on my list tonight is World Nature Conservation Weekend. The Village of Riverside invites the community to the celebration of World Nature Conservation Weekend here in Riverside. World Nature Conservation Day is globally celebrated annual event acknowledging the growing need to conserve our natural resources and the ecosystems that play a vital role in maintaining the health of our planet. Here in Riverside, World Nature Conservation Weekend will explore and embrace Riverside's green spaces and the Displanes River. Events offered on Saturday, July 29, and Sunday, July 30 include birdwatching walks along the river corridor and kayak rentals. Also offered are free guided tours of the Guthrie Park Arboretum and the history and conservation of Swan Pond. All activities will highlight Riverside's efforts in conserving natural resources. People of all ages and abilities are welcome to enjoy any and all of these events. Please come out and learn more about our nature resources. More information is on our website, or you can contact Trustee Mateo. I would also like to inform everyone that we have also informed all of our C4 partners' communities, so if you, if anyone from Riverside is interested in signing up for the various different activities that you need to sign up for, like the birdwatching or the kayaking, you should do that soon because we're anticipating quite a flux. So thank you very much. Anything else? Would you like to add anything? No? Okay. Next up is the manager's report.
I just have a couple of items that I wanted to note for residents. We seem to have had an uptick of door-to-door solicitations. I just wanted to remind residents that we have an ongoing list on the village website, so if for some reason someone comes to your door and doesn't have a license to go door-to-door, you can certainly call our dispatch center, you can call 911, or you can call the non-emergency number, provided they will dispatch an officer to then notify the solicitor that they must get a license through the village. But you can always check, too, if they provide the information. You can go to our village website. Under trending, there is a door-to-door solicitation list, and we update it as certain solicitation license expire and new ones are issued. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you. We will move on to resident comments on non-agenda items. Are there any residents that would like to speak tonight on non-agenda items? We'll start with Ms. Pruitt-Jones.
Good evening, everyone, and appreciate this opportunity to provide comments from the Pruitt-Jones household, but also representing many of our neighbors that live along Fairbank Road between Indian Gardens and the Scout Cabin. We received a letter from Parks and Recreation, I think it was two weeks ago, notifying us that they plan to establish a disc golf course between the road leading into the Scout Cabin to the road that leads into Indian Gardens parking lot. Earlier this week, I submitted on behalf of our family a letter to the Park District and copied all of you related to some of the issues that we think are of serious concern for citing this activity in this particular place. We have absolutely, you know, no concerns about the fact that the Rec Department is looking to expand activities and really support that. We enjoy all of the things that Parks and Recs have done in the village, and we certainly know how much effort they have put into expanding programs, particularly around Indian Gardens and the Scout Cabin. So we were very supportive of Parks and Recs, but at this point, we feel that this area of Riverside that is sited along a blind curve where people drive very fast, there's a tremendous amount of parking, while multiple activities are taking place, both at the Scout Cabin and in the ball fields and at the tennis courts, and everybody else walking through there, cycling through there, et cetera, that there's more and more conflict or potential for conflict in terms of what's happening on the roadway and what's happening in the parks. It would have been really great if Parks and Rec had actually reached out to the residents while they were planning, because we could have been able to provide a lot of really valuable, real-hand experience, real-life experience, living across from this very busy place, and also to really understand the increasing negative interactions between vehicles, park users, pedestrians, cyclists, skiers, and dog owners that are, you know, constantly using this space throughout the year. So the amount of activities that are happening in this very small area is already, stresses the limits of the multi-use that's taking place in this beautiful part of Riverside. So we pointed out some very specific safety issues that we see would be a problem, and in particular with a course with holes where you're throwing something that is so close to the road, the frisbees are going to end up in the road, and that is going to be a really dangerous situation. We were wondering if the Park District has done any research on best practices and safety that would inform where to site a disc golf course and how far back from the road. So we think it's going to be critical that the board has that information before this project goes any further. The current course design, you know, again, uses this very narrow stretch of grass between the road and woodland, and there are, there's a very large expanse of grass that surrounds the ball fields that's set away from the street and set away from the parking area at Indian Gardens, which the parking area, you know, cars slow down and they're parking. It's the getting in and out of that area where people go very fast, and there's blind, there's visibility issues because we have the lovely woods, woodlands that come right up to that parking lot. And so getting, you know, getting this disc golf course away from the road and away from that parking lot is going to be really important. So perhaps using this underutilized, relatively underutilized space around the ball fields could be a really great alternative. I mean, we can understand why it wouldn't be sited at a place like Big Ball Park. You know, you've got roads in every direction, you know, and other park and recreational space in Riverside, but right where it's sited or proposed to be sited is going to be a very dangerous situation. We also pointed out some issues with respect to visibility and aesthetics. It was commented at a previous board meeting, and it was commented in the notification letter to residents that these large metal structures that are, that are above-ground holes for the golf course, for the disc golf course, would not be visible to the residents, would be hidden. Well, based on the layout of the plan, they would be very visible for many houses and not just the golf, not just the holes that are right along the road, but just, you know, on the other side and back up towards the Scout Cabin. And then for about seven months of the year, when there are not leaves covering these deciduous trees, these structures would be visible completely to the residents during a period of time where likely the golf course would not be used. So it may be that the Parks and Recs Department is planning to seasonally remove the metal structures, which would certainly alleviate that to some degree, but it's not going to alleviate the safety problem. So lastly, I wanted to say that on behalf of our family and our near neighbors is that we're really glad that the Parks and Recs Department is establishing an advisory group or committee that's going to be working with them on that. We have some neighbors that are already volunteering to serve on this committee, and hopefully there'll be some really good outcomes coming from that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Your men? Please.
Hello, I'm Ethan Daniel, and I've lived here since I was three years old. I think that adding a disc golf course would be not beneficial to the area because I think it would eliminate a lot of the nature aspect of the area. I think that there is a lot of activities already in the area, and I think that a disc golf course is not needed in this area.
Thank you. We appreciate both comments, and Mr. Mel Kehoe has got your letters, and I'm sure they'll take it up with the advisory commission. Thank you. I appreciate you coming. Mr. Hennessy.
Hello, my name is Sean Hennessy. I'm a Riverside-er, and I would love to talk about where I live. I love this town. And President Ballerine, let me start by saying you're the best village president we've ever had. I think you've always been a voice of reason. I supported you in the election, but I'm not going to vote for you next time because you have failed.
That's good, because I'm not running next time, so that's good. But keep going.
You have failed in the most basic duty of your job, to help those who need it most. Under your watch, you've allowed our local slumlord, Ron Kafka, to abuse the residents of the Water Tower Apartments, who are the most vulnerable people in Riverside. I've lived in two African countries and the worst neighborhood in LA, but I assure you, the Water Tower Apartments in Riverside is the worst place I've ever lived, by far. You turn a blind eye when Kafka breaks the building code again and again, so he will keep doing it. Assistant Village Manager Ashley Monroe is going to publish a guide for renters in the next few weeks, and Building Inspector Frank Krupa is making about one visit per month to the Water Tower Apartments to politely ask the property manager, Sandy, to obey the law. You're not doing enough. So I have three questions for you, President Ballerine. Number one, Riverside has a full-time employee who literally only takes care of the trees, but we don't have it in the budget to hire Frank Krupa full-time to help the poor human beings who live here? Number two, does that mean you care more about the trees in front of your house than you care about the poor who live down the street? And number three, what are you going to do personally to improve the living conditions at the Water Tower Apartments, President Ballerine? Thank you.
Thank you. Good to stay there. Generally, we don't respond during public comment, but your egregious statements deserve a response because to say we have done nothing to solve the problem at any of the buildings, any of the rental buildings in this town, is inaccurate, and it should be, it's not only inaccurate, it's insulting to not only me, to this village board, but to the staff. So I will start by lettering our attorney, Robert Pickrell, give you just a brief example of what we're doing and how we're doing it and what limitations we have, which obviously you are unaware of. So, Robert.
Well, the first and most important thing we've done is we filed a lawsuit to enforce all those violations you're talking about. It's currently pending in the circuit court of Cook County. As you correctly stated, there are a number of violations going on in the property, and so we're seeking to amend our complaint to capture the most recent batch of those, but the list is very long. Our goal in filing this lawsuit is to take the most aggressive approach we possibly can towards this enforcement, and that's why we're asking for the maximum fine available under Illinois law, which is governed by the Illinois Municipal Code. I know later we're talking about home rule. There are some options. We could talk more about different options we might have if the village ever became home rule, but for now, we are constrained by the Illinois Municipal Code for what we can ask for, and we are seeking the absolute maximum penalty that is available to us. This is the strongest statement of condemnation the village can give, and we are aggressively pursuing it.
And this village board, working on the footings of the previous village board, strengthened, enforced, and currently has one of the strongest rental registries in the suburbs. I don't think there is another rental registry in a non-home rule community in Illinois. So to date, we have four new citations since May 2023 for non-compliance with building codes, rental registry. We have 28 outstanding violations, concerns as metallic, since March 2023. Rental property inspections have identified 58 individual violations, amongst them eight, amongst eight units, and building in general. We do get to look at the building every time we go into a rental registry. That's one of the things we added. The building has 31 rental units, which a minimum of 720% of the units must be inspected each year, with all units being completed in three years. Rental inspection at this property has been conducted on three days between September and December 2022. Based on the failed inspections and property complaints from residents in the village, the property has completed since 2021 two corrections of fire alarm panels, 2022 and 2023, installed CO smoke combination detectors in observed units, updated electrical in 12 units, and updated two panels, installed cold required exit, emergency signs, and updated sump pump electrical in 2022. Replace the boiler system in 2021 and 2022. Replace the rear exterior staircase, 2021. Replace the rotted wood trim and stucco in 2021. Floor joints and ceiling repair in a unit, 2023, work is being in progress. Roof repair, 2023, processing for insurance, approved 720 of this year. Tuck boning and lintel replacement, 2023, in plan review. So to say we have done nothing, this board has done nothing since 2020, is not only inaccurate, but it's inaccurate. So I appreciate you coming, but when you come, come talk to us first so you can have the proper information, because I'm not going to allow, I understand what you're going through, and I cannot allow people to disparage both this board, myself, and staff when we are doing everything we possibly can to remedy your situation. So with that, I appreciate you coming, and we will move on. Clerk Sol, if you would please read the consent agenda.
Renode voucher list of bills, July 6, 2023. Approved voucher list of bills, July 20, 2023. Approved Village Board of Trustees regular meeting minutes, June 15, 2023. Approved Village Board of Trustees executive session meeting minutes, June 15, 2023. Review and file public works and community development, June monthly reports. Review and file economic development commission meeting minutes, March 14, 2023. Review and file landscape advisory commission meeting minutes, May 9, 2023, and June 13, 2023. Review and file planning and zoning commission special meeting minutes, May 1, 2023. Review and file planning and zoning commission meeting minutes, April 26, 2023. Review and file historical commission meeting minutes, May 15, 2023, and June 20, 2023. A resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and issue a purchase order for the not to exceed amount of $45,000 to Lauterbach and Amon LLP for temporary accounting services. A resolution to approve residential stormwater management permit incentives policy. Approval of economic development assistance application for Armarts, 3346 South Harlem Avenue. A resolution authorizing a temporary use for outdoor dining at Katrina Bar, 34 East Avenue. A resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and enter into an agreement with Pave Connect in the amount of $35,541 for pavement rejuvenation to be conducted on various village roadways. A resolution authorizing the village manager to create a purchase order in the amount of $70,750 for Christopher B. Burke Engineering to provide professional design and construction engineering services as part of the commuter lot, number eight, Green Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. An ordinance amending the village code regarding appointments of village officers, and a resolution amending the Village of Riverside Employee Manual, sections 3.05, 3.06, and 3.12 relative to paid time off.
Thank you, Ethan. Do anyone in the audience or anyone at this table would like anything to be removed? Yes, ma'am.
If we could remove item L from the consent agenda, I notice we have some minor changes to the program, and it seems like a very, you know, important program to alert our residents to about the residential stormwater management incentive.
Okay, so if I can have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for everything but item L?
So move.
Trustee Mateo, second by trustee Gallegos. Any other comments? Hearing none, Ethan, if you'd please call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Okay. We will move to a resolution to approve the residential stormwater management permit incentives policy, which is on page 115 of your packet. Ms. Trustee Marcheska?
Okay. The policy is on page 115 of the packet as drafted, but then it appears that on our, at our places, we have a redlined update to that. Do we, does everybody have that?
Yes.
Okay. So just so the residents are aware, this wonderful program is going to give properties that are approved for residential stormwater management projects such as rain gardens over 100 square feet, dry wells over 10 cubic feet, and now exterior drain tiles, downspout disconnection accompanying repositioned gutter and drain tile discharge, relocations of sump pumps or other drainage device to mitigate water discharge, and overhead sewer installation, rebates of up to $250 off their permit fees. This is being done in an effort to incentivize and just thank our residents who are taking proactive action to address stormwater management issues in a world where we are unfortunately seeing a lot of flooding on personal property, and there's a lot of impacts all around us with each new extreme rain event. So we have $5,000 that is allocated to this project for 2023 out of the Water and Sewer Fund, and I just wanted to take this additional opportunity to let all of our residents know that it's there. So apply for it, use it, and thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Marcheska, and thank you, Trustee Mateo, for working with Ashley this week to get this final together. Hearing that and seeing the red line, can I have a motion and a second to approve?
So move.
Motion by trustee Marcheska, second by trustee Gallegos. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ethan?
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marcheska. Thank you. We move on to department, board, and commission reports. Are there any reports this evening? Okay, hearing none, we move into pending business. First thing on the agenda is an ordinance amending Title IX First thing on the agenda is an ordinance amending Title IX traffic of the vehicle code concerning local traffic regulations. Manager Francis.
Thank you. So this item is a recap of the discussion from June when the board gave guidance as it relates to the Berkeley traffic flow and different restrictions. So I'll provide a brief update from the June 15, 2023 board meeting. The village board directed staff to do the following, to move the do not enter signs from Harlem Avenue and Berkeley Road to just west of the driveway for the townhomes. Below that sign will be another sign that states authorized vehicles only, which was, is incorporated into this ordinance. Install a right turn only sign at the dispensary curb cut on Berkeley Road. Install stop sign and crosswalk at Byrd and Berkeley. Install signage to alert drivers that the area is under surveillance and conduct quarterly traffic counts and report that data back to the village board. Since that meeting, the stop sign was installed, and the additional signage noted below was ordered. And the attached ordinance, while I do admit Attorney Pickrell and I kind of had to go through it a couple of different times to make sure we are incorporating the essence of what the board had wanted. It allows for, you'll note that, or I will note that, it incorporates both those that are in Byrd, Berkeley, and those townhomes that are located on Harlem, that they can pass that area, the restricted area of authorized vehicles only, and their gas.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Okay, I just have one comment. This evening, I was sitting out front waiting for Representative Rashid, and a resident that lives on Byrd came up, and we started talking about this issue. And I asked her, I said, well, how do you, how do you like the stop sign? And she goes, I love it. She goes, that's great. And I says, well, you got Grace Daly to thank for it. And she was, she's like, who? I said, Grace. She goes, oh, you must meet her mother. I said, no, I mean Grace. The 10-year-olds have as much say in this village as their parents. So I encourage all residents to speak up, and we will always do our best to help you. So with that, if I can have a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Mateo, second. Second by trustee Evans. Any further comments? Ethan, please.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshaska.
Motion carries. New business, first on our agenda is a motion to accept the Village of Riverside's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022. Director Johns.
Thank you. On an annual basis, state statute requires that the village conduct an audit of their financial statements. The board has entered into a three-year agreement with Lauterbach and Amon. This is the first year of that contract. Due to staffing challenges this year, the village did get an extension on the audit filing from the state. The treasurer's report was published in the June 28 edition of the landmark, and the comptroller's report will be filed with the state by the end of July. Matt Baron is here from Lauterbach and Amon to review the report with the board, but I first wanted to give some quick highlights from the audit. The village was conservative with the 2022 budget while we continued to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. And I am very happy to say that the general fund ended with a surplus of $2,254,000 before transfers in and out, with an overall increase of $2,016,000 in general fund, unassigned fund balance for future capital.
Thank you, Karen. Good to see everybody again tonight. I'm here to present for the audit. I'll keep it at a high level, but I know everybody has a copy of it. Happy to answer questions as I get through the presentation. So as far as what this audit ended up providing to you, I have two documents that we're going to go over, is the audit report and the management letter. I'm going to start with the audit report. The highlights of this would be, starting off with, we gave the village an unmodified opinion again this year. It's the highest opinion that we provide. Essentially, what we're saying with that opinion is three things. One, this audit report is in compliance with little government accounting standards. Two, the numbers within this report are materially correct, or in other words, the numbers are what they say they are. And three, the village has an adequate internal control framework in place. As far as the financial health, Karen went into those numbers for you, but we also do a check where we review how did the expenditures compare to those fund balances? And at the general fund, we're at 61%. Water fund, we're comparing to the unrestricted fund balance, we're at 100%. So both of those, we're seeing very healthy fund balances for the village as we go out into the next year, especially as she talks about your investing in future capital needs. In addition, for this audit report, you may note in that report, you see a certificate of achievement. Last year's audit report was filed with the GFOA for this certificate of achievement, which is the highest award in external, with financial reporting. We are going to be filing this report as well for that award. And so no reason it will not get that same award again for the village for next year. Before I go into the management letter, any questions about the audit report? As far as the management letter goes, this is additional information, other comments that we're providing to you that came out of this audit. So that don't exactly fit within the audit report, but we feel the need to communicate these to the board. I typically break these up into three different types, one being more informational in nature, just to give you a heads up, something is coming up. Two, true best practices that we see out in the industry. And three, internal control issues that we really view that the village needs to be correcting immediately. As far as what we have this year, we had two current management letter comments, both of which would be informational in nature related to new accounting pronouncements that are coming up for future years. We'll be helping the village implement those as we have every other year into their audit report and helping Karen along the way to help get these implemented. I don't need to bore you with the details of those. Gasmu's been very busy, so we, that's why we work together on those things. As far as prior recommendations goes, there were three that were outstanding in the prior year. One, again, was another government accounting standard that we implemented into this report related to leases. Funds with deficit fund balances, the business districts and the, or all three business districts are still at a deficit fund balance, and we're in need to communicate that to you. And there's a nice management response that's been put in here by Karen to help support what the plan is for those into the future. And a discussion of police pension, timely approvals. So we'll be working with, going forward on that one, because that's a carryover from the prior year.
Thank you. Is there any questions that you would have, or Karen, or anyone? Okay, hearing none, if I can have a motion and a second to accept the report? Trustee Gallagos, second. Second by trustee Evans. Any further questions? Hearing none, if you could, Ethan?
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshaska.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Discussion regarding request for proposal for Parks and Recreation Department. Director Melkey Odie.
Good evening, President Ballerin, village trustees, manager Francis. Before you, is a draft request for proposal for review. This was created with the assistance of village clerk Sol and based on information gleaned from other agencies. Typically, draft RFPs are not brought before the board, but we felt this was a significant step for the development of the department and could provide the framework for at least the next 10 years of development. So this initiative is comprised of three phases, and each will provide essential information. These initiatives were included in the department's CIP budget, and they're based on an initial consultation. The community survey, with an approximate cost of $25,000. The goal of this phase would be to obtain important feedback from the community, including residents and program participants, which could include residents from other towns regarding what they would want in terms of future park space, playgrounds, and program development. We would look to maximize engagement to achieve the best results for this phase. Parks and Program Assessment, with the approximate cost of $40,000. Complete a forensic study of the department and evaluate the department's facilities, playgrounds, and programs to determine strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. This would be informed by the survey and would provide information for long-term planning. And the master plan, with an approximate cost of $125,000. This would be a long-range plan for park spaces, facilities, and programming, providing a clearly divine vision, which would prioritize needs and future projects. This is the phase, so the board, basically what we're looking for is direction from the board on any and all of these phases, because they can be broken out individually. I believe that the master plan probably needs the most consideration, depending on what the board felt were priorities for the village. Just for instance, if the, if we felt the priority was updating our playgrounds, we could achieve that with just the first two phases, and then working with a playground architect, pursuing grants, things of that nature. But if the board felt that they wanted kind of revisioning of the department and all of the park spaces, then that would be included in the master plan. So just looking for any direction on pursuing any and all of these presented phases so that we can publish and distribute the RFP.
Okay, thank you. I just, anybody have any questions for Director Melkey Odie? Mr. Evans?
So what, what would be the deliverable for the survey? Obviously, the survey itself, but what else would we get? How are they going to develop it? How are they going to do outreach? Are we going to be responsible for outreach? I just want to know what we're going to be requesting in exchange for the grant.
We would work closely with whoever's contracted to develop that, but obviously, we want maximum response, which is always a challenge with any survey. So we would work with them as far as, I don't know if that would involve town halls. I don't know what other methods that they pursue to maximize that interest, but that's what we would be looking for.
And to kind of add to that, part of it would be they would formulate based on feedback from the Parks and Rec Board, so they would have the primary lead on this particular initiative. And so providing that feedback and working in tandem with them. And so giving that additional feedback. And we would certainly bring a draft to the village board if the village board wanted to see that, to make sure it was in alignment with what the initiatives and goals are. But similar to other boards, I, from my perspective, so this is why we're bringing this, because this is very different from any typical RFP or RFQ that we've ever done, is to make sure that what we're envisioning the deliverables to be is in alignment with what the village board would like, because this can be a very powerful document. I actually met with Superintendent Ryan Toy, I think it was last week. And I was talking to her about, you know, we're going to be doing this RFP, and there's going to be some probably really great deliverables that will be helpful to them too, because obviously, outdoor play, different activities, you know, Parks and Rec works so closely with School District 96. And she was very excited, and she's like, yes, absolutely. You know, however, we can partner on it and give feedback. And so they may, they can also be a powerful addition of giving that feedback as well. One of the things that Ron and I spoke about, and Ethan as well, was, you know, we want to make sure we're casting a really wide net. So as part of that survey, you want to have not just Riverside residents, but those that are participants in our program, because you've got District 96 residents, you've got District 208 residents, and potentially beyond that too. Like when we have the puzzle event that we had, we had non-Riverside residents that attended. And so getting that feedback is going to just make the programming and the things that Parks and Rec starts to put together and roll out in the future that much more powerful. Sorry.
No, thank you.
Well said.
I was just going to add that this is entirely, this approach is entirely consistent with what we're doing with the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative, and can dovetail very nicely with the work that our team is doing. We have some preliminary survey results, but the next step in our analysis of that community input is going to be doing a gap analysis. So it's, you know, just going to progress and dovetail very nicely, and I hope we'll stay in continued communication about each step of the process.
Absolutely.
Excited.
Two questions. The, the dollars for this is coming out of recreation budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this does not come out of our general fund. And secondly, I assume you're, how does your, where does your board fall in this?
They're in favor of all of the pursuits. They did, you know, so they didn't make a recommendation as far as which ones they would pursue or not, but they're in line with this initiative. I think they know that outside of the recommendation, it's still going to fall to the village board. So they were looking for direction. But we do have a meeting Monday night where we will be discussing this.
So I would, I would recommend having a good discussion with them. And because they're, they're the board that has the jurisdiction over these parks. So we want to make sure that, you know, they're the ones that are going to be the ones that implement this plan. So as you get closer, I would, I would like to, you to come back and give us a feedback from the board.
Sure.
Yes, is that, sure.
There's nothing residents want to talk to me more about than Parks and Rec. Can we get pickleball courts? There's too many pickleball people on the tennis courts. Why don't we have basketball? Why can't we register for after-school care in non-office hours? Can someone clean off the tennis courts? That last one's mine, by the way.
Or the pickleball courts, which is mine, by the way.
Get the pickle people off the tennis courts, yeah. I just, there are a few issues in Riverside that unite us all. This is one of them. I think given the particular nature of the funding available to Parks and Rec and the size of our village and the natural limitations and the size of staff that you can have, it is normal to me that we would not have all skills in-house. And so it makes sense to me that we would go outside to get some extra expertise and some guidance. I think you mentioned possibly breaking these down. I'm in favor of all of them. I'm particularly in favor of the master plan. I think the master plan is critical in terms of identifying where we're going. I think the needs of the village are changing and have been changing for some time, and it's critical that Parks and Rec react to that. I think you've done a nice job trying to react to some of those things I've already listed. I know that you work on. I know we see change, but I think the master plan is really critical to address the needs of Riverside in those next 10 years that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
So in terms of the long-term plan, I agree, long-term planning is extremely important. I'm wondering if maybe 10 years is too short a vision to have. You know, with the C4, we're planning for 2050, because, you know, there's reduction in CO2 emissions that we're driving forward, trying to get to net zero. How can Parks and Rec be a part of that? How can we work together to get there? So I think that kind of environmental climate awareness is an important thing to build into your plan. I would also suggest too, that maybe the types of materials that are used or the types of approaches that are used, you know, are going to be something that you look at as a means to the long-term impacts of certain decisions. So if there's a particular surface material that's used, is there going to be problems with the disposal of said material, you know, 20 years down the road when it starts degrading? You know, these are, these are considerations that necessarily to, you know, assess the full cost of something, need to be on a longer time scale than simply a 10-year view. So that would be.
I mean, we think it would be at least 10 years.
At least.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
The longer we can push it out, the better. We, as department heads, we tend to think in 10-year increments, because there's so many changes from year to year.
Of course.
That while we like to plan even longer in the future, we have no idea what that would entail, but that's no reason to look in that direction.
But, yeah, but I mean, entire life cycle costs, you know, need to be taken into account as you're, as you're looking at things. And sometimes if you have a very limited 10-year timeframe, you don't come to the point where you have to deal with the full nature of those costs. So I definitely understand that things that are further along in the timeframe have less detail associated with them. But, you know, I mean, I'm seeing references to land acquisition and, you know, things of that nature in here. And those are, you know, maybe things that, you know, are great ideas and may come from, you know, community demand as far as what these surveys reveal, but maybe might not be something that's reasonable to accomplish in the first 10 years.
Right.
So, just my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Pollak.
Thank you, President Ballerin. Probably comes as no surprise to anyone, but I support planning and municipal government. I did review the RFP. I did review the RFP. It's very well done, and thank you to staff for doing that. I thought it was a well-done request for proposals. I would just note for everyone's information that the costs are estimates only. Hopefully, we'll have competitive bidding. Hopefully, there'll be, people feel like they need to undercut those costs in order to, to be the low bidder, and so, hopefully, we'll see, see, be able to spend less, but certainly not guaranteed. One question I have is what is the process for, first, reviewing the proposals that you receive? And second, who awards that contract? Does the Village Board, does Parks and Rec Board look at it first? Or what is the process for reviewing and awarding the contract?
So, I can answer that. So, we would conduct the process. We compile it. I, I would recommend, and so, obviously, this can be a discussion item for the Parks and Rec Board Monday evening, is that there would at least be one or two representatives from the Parks and Rec Board. I say one or two, because of Open Meetings Act, because I, I would envision that there would be other staff members, so there would be Ron's team, and then any other administrative team members, perhaps Clerk Sol, Director Johns, that would also be sitting on that and reviewing those items and compiling the data. And then ultimately, the agreement would be approved by the Village Board and issue a purchase order, unless it's under 25,000. And even if it was under 25,000, these are one of those unique items that I would want the board to opine on, because it's phased, and we're going to make sure that we've, we've provided notice that it's a phased project. So, at any point in time, if the board feels like we've collected enough information and we don't want to pursue other phases, we can do that. If we decide we really like this one consultant for phase one, but we really want to do this, the other one for phase two and three, we can decide to do that. So, that'll be part of the process in compiling basically a matrix that'll be easy to read for the board, obviously for the cost perspective, but then also being consistent about what the vision is of the Village Board and the Parks and Rec Board, to make sure that we're also comparing apples to apples as part of the RFP.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ron, very much.
No, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, what would be the period of performance for the grant, once we award it? Are we, do we have a timeline for when, once we award the grant to a vendor, contractor? Like, will they have a year to, like, six months to develop the survey?
I think it's fair to, to estimate that each of these phases would be a year, but until we start working with that contractor and really, and it also depends on how much feedback Parks and Rec Board wants to have in the formation of these phases, as well as the Village Board. That could extend the time, but I think a fair estimate would be a year for each phase. We'd certainly want it done sooner than later.
Thank you.
I would.
Any other questions? Hearing done. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Move on to C, an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, relative to commercial filming, photography, taping, and other activities within the village. Clerk Sol.
Good evening. This ordinance is updating the commercial filming policy. Key updates to it, we're increasing our application fee from 500 to $750 to recover more of our costs as it relates to use of village staff, vehicles, and equipment. We're also recommending adjusting other certain fees, you know, for different items within our policy. We also are updating insurance requirements as recommended by our insurer, insurer, Irma. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sol?
I have one, just out of curiosity. The requirement that the applicant has to get permission from the residents, a certain number of residents, is that a pretty standard requirement in other areas?
Yeah, they're, it's pretty commonplace. Usually, the company that's doing the filming will provide us with a draft of the notice that they're going to provide to the residents with their letterhead on it, and it's something that is pretty standard from community to community.
Thanks.
Anything else? Hearing none. If I can have a motion in a second?
Motion?
Motion by Trustee Mateo, second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Gallegos. Any further comments? Hearing none. Ethan, if you please?
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Marshauska?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to D, discussion of temporary signs. Planner Siren.
Good evening. This was being brought to the board based on feedback from trustees in one of the affected businesses. Staff was made aware that there were a few businesses in the village that are using feather flags as temporary signs, and they were Goodfellas, Gears to You in the downtown area, the gas station at Harlem and Long Common, and St. Mary's also had a feather flag. And we were made aware that the Art Center is also using a feather flag. These flags cannot be used as temporary signs per the village's sign ordinance, because they move, so, which are prohibited by the village's code. The village code does allow temporary signs. Sandwich boards would be a good example, that can be used without a permit by businesses throughout the village as an alternative. Banners are also allowed, but they must be associated with a special event, with a special event permit that's issued by the village. So, if the Village Board would like to review the issue of temporary signs and refer it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for discussion, we'd be happy to do that. In the meantime, we could place a temporary moratorium on enforcement of those signs until we get direction from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Village Board about any changes you might like to make.
Joe? Oh, actually, wait. I, I would like to go to Planning and Zoning, but also EDC to take a look at this as well, because it does pertain to our small businesses.
What we're looking for is, is basically a consensus on whether we feel that these type of signs should take a further, further look, maybe whether it's temporary, meaning it's only available during certain business hours, or only on certain stretches of property. So, that's what we're looking for, and EDC would be a great place to go also. Is there any other questions, or do we have a consensus that at least we should look at this?
So, when I joined Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the first big projects we tackled was amending the sign code in the B2. It's carefully curated, and there's a reason we prohibit moving signs, and I've been seeing these feather signs elsewhere and in Riverside. And I think we, I'm personally not in favor of allowing those types of signs, even temporarily.
Thank you. Evans?
What kind of feedback have we gotten about the signs?
From the residents?
No, from businesses. Have they been asking?
The, the businesses have been asking to use them. Gears to You uses them for, to announce the rentals that they have. They feel it's necessary to, you know, to have that type of sign to attract business. Harlem Avenue is, is, you know, because of the fact that it's, you know, there's, there's a line of cars parked that, you know, it garners attention. So, and then St. Mary's, and, and I don't, you know, I don't know the reason why St. Mary's used it, or why the Art Center used it, but all we want to do is take a look and see if it's, if it's something we should change. And that, all we're looking at it, and when it comes back to the board, you're more than welcome to vote against it.
And I'd be happy if EDC and PZC both explored possible alternatives.
Perfect. Yes.
I agree. I think it's reasonable to take a look. I don't know how I feel particularly about the signs, but I think it's important to take a look. I'll, I'll note, just Gears to You is in a quirky spot in our village that has not much as linear in our village, and so, they're sort of in a tucked-in quirky spot, so I am sympathetic to the problem. And I think it's reasonable to take the feedback from our businesses and acknowledge that there are other entities in town that are using these, and come up with something that's at least applied consistently, or thought, applied thoughtfully.
Anything else? Yes, Pollak.
I'm certainly open to having Economic Development and Planning and Zoning take a look at it. I would not be in favor of allowing temporary signs or movable signs on a regular basis, but I would be, possibly be open to expanding the special event signs that are allowed, or something like that, something on a much more limited basis, but would appreciate hearing from Planning and Zoning and Economic Development, and as well as the business community.
Thank you. Ms. Marshauska?
I concur.
Concur. Okay. So, if you could put this on both the EDC and Planning and Zoning's plate, and put a moratorium on enforcement until it gets back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, we're putting a moratorium on the enforcement, so we can have?
Put them back out from now till the end of September, until we talk about them again.
Even though the ordinance says that it's not permitted?
That's why it's, we're in a moratorium. You don't want to, I mean, so, I, I thought I had consensus, but I guess.
I have a moratorium, but I can give a definitive answer on this.
I have not.
Okay. Okay. Would you like a moratorium or not? So, allow them up for the next, till we see this again.
How long until we see this again?
I would assume we'd see this by the end of September.
I don't know about that.
Maybe October. I would say 90 days.
90 to 120 worst-case scenario.
I just, I'm sympathetic to the issue, but I've not heard from residents on this. I think there are some strong feelings on this on both sides, and so, my personal view is we should observe the current standard until we make a decision to change. I understand now, if I'm correct, like, honest answer, these signs were out there, not, the, it wasn't really being enforced. They were out there until we received some complaints.
Well, so, myself, staff, and there are others in the community, board members as well, that are aware that these are not signs that are allowed. They never submitted a, a permit for it, or called staff, and so, it was more of, we went out, we saw it, and then Ann followed up with them, notifying them that that wasn't a permitted sign.
But we, did we get any complaints from residents?
Ann, are you aware of any?
We haven't received any complaints from residents that I'm aware of specifically.
I've only spoken with, I've spoken with one business, and it's impacting them. And again, I just, I am sympathetic to that particular problem, and I want to support our businesses. I think that's critical. It's difficult enough to get people into Riverside, into that section of Riverside. I just don't want to kick over a hornet's nest when we haven't spoken to other businesses and other residents and given them an opportunity to weigh in.
I think we will through the EDC and the Planning and Zoning.
And this could serve as a trial period as well, so we'll see what it's like.
Well, I think most of those, I mean, I think the Gears to You will be done in 30 or 45 days, just because of business, but.
I know. And I, again, so, Gears to You is the business that I've spoken to in particular, and their business is probably naturally seasonal, and so, there is an, an initial inclination to sort of give them a little flexibility. It doesn't feel fair to other businesses who aren't necessarily seasonal, or haven't had time to purchase signs, or if they go out and purchase signs, but then nothing changes. I just want to make sure we're being as equitable as possible.
Mr. Pollak?
I have to be honest, I was the one who brought up the idea of moratorium. I've been talking with President Ballerine about it, but having heard from the trustees, and having thought about it myself some more, I'm much more hesitant now. One, because we don't know how many people would suddenly put feather signs or banners up. You know, when I initially thought it might be worth talking about, I thought, well, you know, one or two businesses downtown put them up, I could live with that for a few months until we figure out what we're doing with it, but I guess if we don't have strong support from the Village Board, I think the default probably should be to stick with our code for now.
Okay. Ms. Marshauska?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So, consensus is that we will send this back to EDC and Planning and Zoning, but until they come back to the board, the signs are not, not allowed in the village.
If I may, one more item, just important to note from a process standpoint. If the feedback is that there should be a text amendment, then this item would then go to Preservation, because any text amendments have to go through the Preservation Commission.
Thank you. You good? Ann?
Yes.
Okay. We move on to discussion regarding home rule authority. This is a 60,000-feet discussion, and I asked Attorney Pickrell to kind of walk through it and give us some of the pros and cons and positives. This is something we wouldn't be doing till a year from November.
Right, thank you. Yeah, in your packet of ULC that I have, I submitted a memorandum and then a question and answer document provided by the IML. It's about 35 pages. It's a long read. So, what I'm going to do is give you a, just a, when reading those documents, I think it's easy to misunderstand what home rule is, because it's a series of disconnected rules, and it's very context-specific. So, I want to take a step back and just give you the concept of what home rule is, and then once you understand that a little better maybe, the, how it actually manifests in different areas of law will, will seem self-evident. So, as a non-home rule community, we begin with the assumption that Riverside has no authority, and then the Illinois Municipal Code and other laws then grant authority to Riverside. So, when we want to do anything, we want to enact a tax, we want to regulate behavior of this and that, we have to look at the Illinois Municipal Code or other laws to find out, do we have that authority? So, you start with the negative and look for the positive. Home rule is the opposite. Home rule, when you become home rule, you are assumed to have the same powers as the state, which is, and then from that, the state then filters our scope of powers. So, it's a series of prohibitions rather than permissions. So, if we were to say we want to regulate leaf blowers, we want to, we want to enact this zoning ordinance, we want to do anything, you begin with the assumption that you can do it, and then you have to look for the reason, and if the state has come in and said, you can't. This is something that is of statewide concern, and we're going to regulate it. The way that then presents itself in a series of topics, be it, you know, enforcement, zoning, tax, bonds, anything, is that generally speaking, the process to achieve the desired goal is generally, there's usually fewer steps. You generally have greater authority to do so, and the process is generally shorter. Now, is this a good thing? Is it a bad thing? Neither. It is simply a tool of government. It's something that, when you have this authority, some people view those constraints in the Illinois Municipal Code as barriers to be overcome, and they're very difficult, and they are often cumbersome and require legal advice, and that's, that sometimes obstructs government's goals. Other times, you might view it as a protection against government access. So, depending on who's doing what, this can either be an asset or a liability, and so, you know, for, for what this, so, I, I take no position on whether home rule is a good thing or a bad thing. It's simply a tool that's available to you if you, if the voters choose to, to enact it, or we get over 25,000 people. The, as you've seen in the memorandums, there was a series of discrete topics, and we could talk about any one of them. You know, one that came up this evening notably was enforcement. Enforcement's a good option. So, generally speaking, with enforcement, there is a series of rules about what, what the village itself can enforce, how it can enforce its code. It can do through administrative enforcement, that's, was permitted under the Illinois Municipal Code, but if you were home rule, you could enforce virtually anything, subject to a few exceptions. Under, as a non-home rule community, we're limited to a $750 a day fine. If you're a home rule, there is no limit on fines. And for a non-home rule community to have an administrative enforcement system, you have a series of steps you have to go through. If you're home rule, you don't have those steps. You're really only constrained by the Constitution and due process, which is just notice and an opportunity to be heard. So, I guess I'd, it, I, I, you know, I gave you a lot of information, and so, I'm sure you have a lot of questions, but just, if you understand as a basic concept what this does, is it places the community, Riverside, if we were to be home rule, in the same position as the state of Illinois, to enact laws and regulate behavior, and incur debt, and levy taxes, and do all those things, unless the state has said that we can't do it. So, with that background, is there a particular area of home rule authority? If you have a question about it, I'd be happy to answer it. As you can see, if you go through these, you'll see, you know, basically, it streamlines and hastens and expands our authority.
One of the things that I've heard, and I know that there's some successful home rule, non-home rule communities turning to home rule communities, was setting up the referendum that stated that they could not raise property taxes, because that's the number-one thing that you hear. You're just going to go crazy with property taxes.
Right.
Can you explain how that could be alleviated?
Yeah, many communities, Bannockburn Lake Forest, several others, what they do is when they become home rule, either with the referendum or by subsequent ordinance, place constraints on the levying of taxes. Why, I mean, often they'll say, we will abide by PTEL. Some communities say, absent extraordinary circumstances, some just say, we will abide by it, and you can place a constraint on yourself. So, that's, that's one way, I mean, it is, it is a way to alleviate concerns about, you know, runaway taxes, for example. a way to alleviate concerns about runaway taxes, for example, is that you can always restrain yourself.
Okay. Mr. Pollak?
Follow-up on that specific item. Can something, can a restraint like that be placed on a board that is binding on the next board?
The, well, it's, if we're binding, there is, ultimately, if you are home rule, you have the authority to change rules, and so it would be binding unless collectively there would be ways to undermine it if that was the board's goal. So that is, there is not a particularly effective way to absolutely, positively, and forever constrain authority, but there are ways that you can, you can take significant steps to do so.
If we put part of the referendum and stated that in the referendum, would that make it binding?
That has been done, and that, it has not been tested in courts yet, but that is something that I think that would likely be effective, but there has not been a challenge to that, and so until it is challenged, I would, I can't say for absolutely certain that that, it would survive that challenge.
Thank you. Mr. Pollak?
So in other words, a village could require, still require a referendum to raise property taxes essentially?
Yeah, they place that burden on the...
As opposed to a board taking unilateral action as a home rule community?
Yeah, if you want to place that restraint on yourself, you could do so.
And not a question, but as long as we're talking about property taxes, I know that is always the number-one concern that residents have when a home rule referendum goes before a village. And I understand, because normally it does make it easier for a village board to raise property taxes, but if you could put restrictions on it, like the attorney just described, that would be helpful. Second thing I wanted to note is that there's been extensive research, or some research done over the years, of home rule in Illinois that shows that home rule villages tend to have lower property taxes because they have other sources of revenue they can go to.
Thank you.
Question from the executive. In a summary, it seems like House Bill 1269 spurred this conversation. If it did move forward, what's in the proposal?
I'm sorry?
House Bill 1269?
Yeah, the, so it grants, House Bill 1269 grants authority to non-home rule communities, and except, I mean, in its current version, this could change, and it hasn't been enacted, so, you know, we're kind of speculating at this point, but what it does is that except for the powers of tax to impose fees and incur debt, non-home rule communities will have the powers provided to home rule communities. So that would be in all the other areas. That would be in administrative enforcements, it would be in regulation, you know, for example, you know, there would be, you know, there's that long laundry list of topics. It would be, if this in its current form were enacted, it would significantly expand non-home rule authority in those areas not removed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Knowing that we will be coming back to the citizens, please.
So how would we still be limited if the bill passes?
You would have, assuming it doesn't change, you would not have the, home rule communities have vastly expanded powers to levy taxes and to, they have unlimited ability. There's no constraints on the fees they could impose, and there is no real limit on debt. So one of the requirements for a non-home rule community is that if you're going to issue bonds, you have to have a referendum. That requirement doesn't exist for home rule communities. So except for those topics, you would enjoy the same rights and authority as a home rule community. So think of, yeah, I guess administrative enforcement, ability to regulate any number of areas that you would want to look at, environmental regulations, it runs the gamut. So you would be, you would begin with the assumption in all other areas except those, that you have the same rights as the state.
Anything else? Pollak?
Just to summarize, I am really not keenly interested in talking further about home rule until we know that what happens with 1269. If that gets approved, it sounds like if that gets approved, that's essentially the same as if we adopted home rule and had a referendum saying we won't raise property taxes. It's kind of...
Be very similar.
Very similar. So you may not need to do anything. I don't think anyone on this board is interested in home rule for property taxes. It's my guess. I certainly am not. But if this bill passes, then, you know, then there's no need to continue talking about it.
My understanding is the bill is kind of stagnated.
According to Illinois Municipal Code, that's correct.
So that's why we just thought it would be nice to start the conversation.
Sure.
To run parallel paths. It's not something, obviously, we're going to take action on tonight or in the near future, but it's something we want to get out there and start thinking about. Okay? Everyone good? Okay. Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Trustee reports and cross-climate collaborative C4 updates. We will start with trustee Marsh Aska.
All right. Thank you very much. As you can see, we have been very busy. In your packets, we have the completed high-level summary reports from our survey series that was conducted. This survey series was kind of to take the top ideas that came out of our community engagement session, our Road to 2050 activities back in January, and to push them out to a new audience, people who did not quite intend, you know, attend that or engage at that time. So collectively, we've reached over 800 residents with these surveys, and they go covering topics from place and culture, from economy and workforce, from health and well-being, bicycles and transportation, community connections and technology, trees and nature, and energy and buildings. And I think, as you can see from the preliminary responses, you know, people are generally very excited. I would say over, you know, 50% of the respondents in general are in favor of moving forward with a climate action and resilience plan. They're generally in favor of, you know, next steps, and so that's what we're going to be doing. We are going to be taking a condensed version of this to each of our taxing body partners, you know, in Riverside. So we'll be taking things that are particular to the schools to the schools, things that are particular to the township to the township, and having further discussions from there and to the business community, too. We are also going to be doing a gap analysis, as I mentioned earlier, which will be to see, all right, we have community feedback. On the community feedback, now how does that align with frameworks and resources and other plans that we know that we can draw on in these areas? So it's exciting times. We've also had some great area meetings. As you can tell from your packet here, we had a Greentown survey with, not survey, summit with all of our area communities at Triton College last month. We, last week, there was a sector meeting for all of the schools in the C4 communities. Then this Thursday, we had a green technology, a green landscape technology town hall that was held virtually, where there's a group that are, you know, interested in furthering regulation of gas-powered lawn equipment, and how do we transition, you know, to electric equipment, either on a municipal basis or through regulation and noise ordinances and things like that. So it was very, lots of very interesting initiatives being discussed. The C4 team has its monthly meeting on the last Thursday of every month, so that would be Thursday of next week at 7:00 PM at the Riverside Public Library, and any member of the public is welcome to come in and join the team and see, you know, how things are progressing. So that's all I have for now. If anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Aberdeen. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. One thing nice about having a meeting at the library is they close it at 9:00, so it's only going to be two hours.
That's, we do that on purpose.
Purpose. Ms. Mateo?
I just want to piggyback on President Ballerine's invitation to come to Riverside's First World Nature Conservation Weekend, July 29th and 30th. Our parks are looking beautiful right now. Thank you, Public Works. So it should be a really nice weekend. I invite you to come to one event, multiple events, one day, both days. There's kayaking, bird watching, sadly, no fishing, Tai Chi. The Olmstead Society is having a cleanup day in Swan Pond on Saturday, and a tour of the Northern Homes on Sunday. What am I forgetting here? On Saturday morning, we'll have people from Brookfield Zoo presenting information for young conservationists aimed at kids, and the U of I extension will have a master gardener there as well to inform people. So again, try to come out. Second item is, as you know, Brookfield Zoo is partially on Riverside property, and they're approaching their 100th anniversary, so they're doing some master planning and are having an information session Tuesday, July 25th, at 5:30 at the auditorium in RB. So if you, they're going to do a presentation on what their current plans are, and then they're going to open it up for Q and As. And if you can't be there for that, you can email your ideas to plan your zoo at czs.org. And that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Mateo. Have you noticed I moved? I have two announcements this evening of retirements. The first one is a sad one, and that's Bob Upus, our resident newspaper. Bob has been with the Landmark for as long as I know. He's a good friend of the village. He's always been an honest and very detail-oriented reporter, even though sometimes we don't always agree with his details. He does a wonderful job. If some people remember the old Sticky campaign where we, you know, various different people from the village were part of their campaign, Bob was part of that also. So he is an integral part of this town, and he will be missed. So I wanted to, if you would stand, come up here for a second. I wanted to give you a little bit of a landmark, so as you can hang on your new office wall or your house wall and always have the landmark with you.
Thanks, Joe. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul.
Picture.
Turn around, sir, if I bother you. Thanks. Thanks, Joe. Thank you. Thanks. This was great. Thanks very much. I appreciate it, and reporters never like to be the story, so it's a little uncomfortable, but I do genuinely appreciate it. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Back in 1997, when Wednesday Journal bought the Landmark, I had moved into a different role in the company at that point, and one of the first things that I was charged with doing was basically integrating the Landmark into our company. I hired the first couple of editors before leaving the company a couple of years later. But four years after that, I was recruited to come back specifically to take over the Landmark, which had gone through a, I don't know, five or six editors in six or seven years, and part of the goal was to kind of stabilize the leadership of the paper and really kind of make it the community newspaper that we always wanted it to be. And I thought I would do that job for a couple of years, and next month is 20 years as the editor of the Landmark, and it's flown by, and I think one of the reasons that I stayed so long is because the people in Riverside and Brookfield and North Riverside embraced the newspaper. They genuinely understood the importance of the newspaper, and after we became a nonprofit a couple of years ago, they have really stepped up to support the newspaper financially to ensure that it is able to continue and be a vital part of the community. And so I thank everybody in Riverside, in Brookfield, in North Riverside for that support. It means a lot to me, obviously. It means a lot to the company, and I think it means a lot to everybody in the, in the community, because as we all know, community journalism is an endangered species, and it's a wonderful thing to actually be a part of and actually be able to provide. And before I go, I just want to say one other thing. I just want to thank Joanne Cozy, who has been part of the Landmark for, well, she's probably been part of it longer than I have, given the fact that I had gone away for a few years. Every week, without, almost without fail, she has provided a column, she has tried to make a connection, she's been a booster of the newspaper, she's really a part of the community, and I just want, and she's going to, she, after I leave, which by the way will be the end of August, so I've got six more issues, she will still continue on. She's still a great part of the newspaper, and I just wanted to thank her personally for all her love and support through all these 20 years. So thanks very much.
Thanks. I left my agenda up there, so I don't remember what else I was going to say. No, I'm just kidding. The second retirement I'm about to announce is my own. My wife and I have purchased a house in Florida. We got an offer we couldn't refuse, so we will be putting our house on the market in short order and moving down to Florida. I've already discussed it with staff, and I've already discussed it with the trustees. We will be working together, and I guarantee you a very cohesive transition, one that you will not even know happened. So I'm excited about my new adventure, and I'm excited about what we've done here in town, and I'm excited about the future. So thank you all. The board has no need, good thing you did bring that back up here, no need for executive session this evening, so I had asked for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallagos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Mateo. Mr. Sol?
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Aska.
Aye.